Aloha mai koko. Thank you for joining us this evening. The organization coordinating this event, Huli, was birthed from a shared drive to work our system by seeking Aina-based equity-focused leadership for Hawaii Island community. Now more than ever, we need leaders who are willing to circle back to our roots and still real change in our communities from Kona to Kau, from Hilo to Hawaii. Conducting the interviews tonight are Jarek and myself, and I'd like to welcome Jen Kagiwata, who is running for county council district in Hilo, District 2, and Jennifer. We'll just give you a few minutes to introduce yourself to everyone.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Great to be here with both of you and on Facebook Live. Yes, again, my name is Jen Kagiwata and very happy to be running for county council District 2, which is primarily the Hilo area from Waileka River, just the other side of the Waileka River, all the way over to Manono Street and up to Hi-Hi Street, so kind of zigzags up on that side. But so, so a good part of Hilo anyway. Anyway, so yeah, and I'm very excited to be here and excited to be running for this position because I really think that community has such a power for change. And through my work in the past, I've worked a lot with community and I kind of want to be that facilitator for change in Hilo because I think that's something that I can do well. And I also know that just, you know, based on my experience, I might not always kind of make a decision that's maybe the best career move for me or anything, but I will always keep the community in mind when I'm making decisions. So those are the two main things that I kind of bring forward with me whenever I'm thinking about, you know, why it is I want to do this. A little more about me, I currently work for a council member right now. So I've kind of been learning the ropes from the inside out, getting to know exactly how the council works and what the county level issues are, what things the county really has purview over and what things we don't. Also getting to know, you know, the department heads and people who work in the departments, I think that's really key. Any council member that's going to be putting forward any proposal is going to need the departments to work with them when they're executing anything that they want to do for the community. So I think working with departments is really key and working with other council members is also really key. It's a nine-person body. It's not a might makes right. You can't just go in there and kind of force your opinions. You really need to work together and come with good ideas and be able to sway people to your good ideas, you know, show them the merits of those ideas and why they should want to support it. So I think my background, working recently with, you know, at the council, working in education, I've worked for DOE in many different capacities. And I've also, in my volunteer capacity, done a lot of organizing. So organizing the women's marches for the whole island for three years, running, not the very first year. I was lucky enough to get to go to Washington DC with the hundred other contingent from Hawaii to represent Hawaii in DC for the first Women's March. But then I came back and right away got started kind of organizing with our community here on this island about issues. People were feeling very concerned and threatened with the new administration and they wanted to figure out ways to voice their concerns and be heard. And so I worked with the community, lots of different parts of the community to try to do that and make that happen for them. So I do see myself as a facilitator in a lot of ways and as someone who uplifts other people's voices to make sure that those who don't normally get heard do have a voice. And so that's really important for me. What else? I'm just, I'm a mom. I have a family here in Hilo. My kids, you know, went to elementary school, middle school, high school here. And yeah, so that's kind of some about me.
Thank you for sharing. And I think Jarek's going to have the first question, which is maybe continuing on some of the stuff that you already shared. But I'll go over to Jarek.
Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you. Okay, so my first question is, how have you advocated for your community and what community projects have worked on?
I'm sorry, what community what have I worked on?
Oh, have you advocated for your community? What community projects have you worked on?
Okay. All right. Good. So I talked a little bit about Women's March. I feel like, you know, I can't always be the one advocating for other groups, especially if that's not some group that I identify with. So for instance, I, after Women's March, made an alliance and worked with the LGBTQ community and Pride and their annual event and other events that they had. And so I worked in a supporting role sometimes to help them and to get organized people to come out and support their events. Same with Black Lives Matter, I was, you know, really trying to help. I wasn't the key organizer, but I didn't want to be the key organizer because I'm not black. So, but I really felt I could be a good support since I had done a lot of organizing on this island. And so I was able to, you know, reach out to my connections that I already made and help them with, you know, logistics that they didn't know about, things like that, and be in the background, but help them uplift their voices. I just want to say a little bit about the very first organizing I ever did and the advocacy work I ever did. And that was around working with early childhood education teachers. I worked on the national and local level, trying to uplift early childhood teachers to try to get better compensation. Some places in the country were trying to unionize. That was really tough to do and didn't really work. But we were able to organize to get teachers' voices heard. And whereas it didn't used to be that anybody in early childhood would talk about compensation at all and about the low pay that teachers got, now it's like pretty standard for that to be part of the conversation and for people to agree that that's a problem and we need to work on it together. So we've moved that conversation along. And once again, I did a lot of training with early childhood teachers, trying to help them have their voices heard, tell a good story, testify, things like that. So that's how I advocated for that group.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's really interesting. The next question, kind of shifting to your district and the role that you're taking on, what do you see as the three most pressing issues facing your district right now? And what do you think are possible political actions that could be taken?
Good question. So the three unique, kind of unique issues, I think, for Hilo, because there's a lot of issues that are island-wide and need work on. But for Hilo, the three issues I think are homelessness, downtown Hilo, and kind of improving downtown Hilo to make it accessible for everyone, and having people's voices heard from the Hilo community. So let me talk about the first one, homelessness. Now, this is something that is an issue in other parts of the island. But I just was listening to the hearing from the Housing Department today, and they talked about the latest point in time count. And Hilo actually had the biggest increase in homeless of anywhere on the island. From 2020 to 2022, it was like a 34% jump in the point in time count. Point in time count, of course, isn't, you know, a real number, but it's kind of one thing that people use when they're trying to track homelessness and data. So this is an issue that I've talked to lots of people about. I've been knocking doors. I've actually, as of this week, I'm very happy to say I've knocked on over 1,000 doors personally in Hilo. And I hear homelessness as an issue, both downtown merchants that I've talked to and families and other people in Hilo. This is a huge issue for everybody. So I was really happy that the county council passed Bill 111, which is a significant amount of money that's going to be targeted at helping the homeless. It's about $9 million a year for five years. So looking at about $45 million over the five years, I like that it's a big enough amount of money, I think, to really do something. But it's also a time limited money. So it's not just there to like create new nonprofits and organizations and feed them and stuff, but to really do something. And if things aren't working after the five years, then that's probably going to be it. So we have to really show that we can move the needle and get people into homes. And I think if that, if we show that we can get people into homes and we're still a little ways away, then hopefully we'll get some more funding. But we really, we really need to move on this and not kind of waste our time, but to be focused. As far as downtown Hilo goes, like I said, I've been talking to people. A lot of people telling me, you know, Hilo is not what it used to be downtown. It seems like there's a lot of trash, you know, besides the homeless issue. There's just kind of a feeling that it's not what it once was and people not feeling really safe to go to downtown, especially at night, a lot of people, especially with children and stuff. So I think that that's an issue that we can work on. There's some great plans that are already on the shelf. And we don't need another group to spend a lot of money and a lot of time making more plans. What we need to do is look, just take those items one by one and get them done. And that kind of leads me to my third point, which is community involvement and community voice for Hilo. Hilo is the only district on the whole island that does not have an action committee made up residents in the district. And so I've been told that that's because Hilo is considered to be already developed. So most of them are, the other ones are called development, you know, action committees. And they say, well, Hilo's developed, so you don't need one. Well, I disagree. We need something where residents have a voice and can move, can move the issues and can say, we need progress on some of these proposed ideas that we have already out there. So those are my three main things. They're kind of tied together. And I think that they could, you know, if we can make a dent in some of these issues, we can really make things better for people in Hilo.
Thanks.
That is interesting. Thank you. Okay, so next question would be, do you think the current council is effective? If yes, why? If no, what needs to be improved?
Yeah. Yeah. So I think it's yes and no. Obviously, there are some things that have been effective and some people there may be more effective than others. But they're also just, you know, issues that tend to be more effective. And then at times, it's not been effective. So I'll take first being effective. I think the thing, when the council's effective, what happens is you have a good idea, you get community input on that idea, you flesh it out with the community involved, you get the departments that will be effective and be responsible for kind of implementing any new idea involved. And you really vet it and you spend that time ahead of time crafting that legislation. And then you bring it to the council and then you can really debate it in council and on its merits. But you've already got a lot of issues that might have come up, taken care of, because you've had a lot of different people looking at it and a lot of different voices. I think when it's not effective generally is when people bring something, it might be a good idea, but they just bring it and kind of plop it on the table and say, let's do this. And they haven't gotten community input. They haven't got departmental, you know, input. And it hasn't really been fleshed out and looked at for the problems it might have and the problems, you know, that you could solve if you had more voices and more ideas and more people looking at it. I will also say that I think it's so important that we have the sunshine law. The state obviously doesn't have the sunshine law and they have a lot of bathroom deals going on. Well, we don't want that. But the sunshine law also can make it hard to collaborate with other council members on legislation and on ideas. So that, I think, we've been talking about and thinking about, are there ways we can kind of tweak the sunshine law? Not to, you know, put the public in the dark at all, but to allow there to be more collaboration. So that's something I would like to continue to explore and think about how we can do that to make things better at the council.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jen. You touched already on homelessness and this is related. So obviously, you know, that affordable housing is a hot topic issue for the island in general. So I'm wondering what paradigm shifting solutions can you offer? And particularly at the council, at the county council level, so that rising real estate prices and values do not correspondingly increase the cost of housing and the cost of living, pushing locals out from the housing market?
Right, right. Good question. So I don't know if I have paradigm shifting ideas, but I think there are things that we know work. We know housing first works. We know it doesn't work to require, you know, people to do things before they get into housing. We have to get them into housing first and then we help them if there are other issues. That's for homeless population. We also need to look at, for low-income renters, I think we need to make sure that they're not discriminated on based on the income source. So that means, you know, if you're, if you've got Section 8 funding, that you are not discriminated against. I know that there are some problems with, for landlords to using, for accepting Section 8. I think the county can really help iron out some of those problems. For instance, I knocked on the door and talked to a resident who said they wanted to rent to Section 8 person, but it was going to take like two months to go through the process. And in the meantime, they lose two months worth of rent, kind of getting through the process to rent to somebody with Section 8 housing. And they just couldn't, it was, you know, a middle-income person who needed this income and they couldn't, you know, afford to do that. So how can the county help smooth out and kind of get out of the way so that people can do the things that are right, which is renting to people regardless of the income source of their rent? So that's, you know, that's one idea. Other ideas to kind of help, these are smaller things, but I think they can make a difference. On Oahu, they have a fund that's for landlords who rent to low-income tenants. If the tenants, you know, damage their property and leave without, and they can't get a hold of them and they can't get them to pay up, there's a fund there that will help pay for those damages. And that will give, I think, landlords a little more peace of mind when renting to low-income people and people that have Section 8, which sometimes, you know, in my conversations, they're a little nervous about that. So I think some of these things the county can do and it can really make a difference on some of these homes that are either vacant, not being rented, or only being willing to rent to certain people and low-income people being discriminated against. So those are a couple of things. I think we can do a lot. You know, the county has the ability to do real estate tax, to tax on real estate. That's probably our biggest strength and we can use that to do socially responsible things and try to move the needle where we want to go. So there's, if we can, you know, lower the rate on taxes when you do long-term rentals, raise the rate when you do short-term vacation rentals to, you know, if we want to discourage one thing and encourage another, we have the ability to do that using our tax policy. And I think that's what we should look at doing. Did I answer your question?
Thank you. So just next question refers to native Hawaiian rights. What do you see the most pressing issue facing native Hawaiians on Hawaii Island? What will you do about it?
So, one, I don't want to presume to say what the most pressing issue is for native Hawaiians on Hawaii Island because I am not native Hawaiian. But based on talking to people and hearing what they have to say, what I have heard, one of the most important things is getting people on the land, their land that was promised to them and is deserved. And I want to relate this a little bit to my own family background because my father, when he was 10 years old, was put in tournament camp during World War II. And his parents and family were stripped of their belongings and, you know, he grew up not, his parents not wanting to speak Japanese to him, not wanting to do Japanese things because of this. And I don't know any Japanese because of this. So I have a little bit of a, you know, parallel I can see where native Hawaiians were stripped of their culture, their land and things. And I think that we need to do everything we can to repay that. Of course, you know, this is mostly a state issue. With DHHL, it's not really a county issue. But with all issues, whether they be state, federal, or county, you know, I'm not going to say we can't do anything. I think there are always things we can do. We can always have public forums to get more input and to get the issue raised. We can do resolutions at the county level and send them to the state saying that the county of Hawaii agrees that we need to do such and such. And in this case, we can, you know, have a strongly worded resolution that says, you know, we believe we need to move this needle. And we can even say, you know, we want this many people in this many homes by such and such date or whatever. You know, so these are the kind of things we can do, even when it's not necessarily an issue that's in our purview directly. So like I said, I won't assume to say what the most important issues are for our island, but this is one I've heard of quite often. And so that's what I would try to do to help.
So I'm sorry, thank you both. To add to that question, although the native Hawaiian rights, county, they have to bring stuff like that. But there are also rights that also go down to the shoreline, right? Which county do have say on? What would you be, would you look, what kind of solution would you look for to help secure?
Yeah, okay. Can you hear me? Okay. Cutting out a little. Am I clear? Okay. Yeah. So I, Jarek, I have to say, I don't know a whole lot about fishing rights, but I have actually heard from a few people when I've talked to them at their doors about this issue. I know people, some people have mentioned they're a little concerned about the Bay Trails plans and some of the other plans that seem like they're trying to take the shoreline, the Hilo Bayfront shoreline, and make it kind of more commercialized areas that are for the tourists or whatever. And so I think that we need to make sure that fishermen are involved decisions because I don't necessarily think that the voice has been there when they're developing, say, the Hilo Bay Trails for that area. So I, what I would do is try to arrange to make sure that people who are the people who need to, who know the details about this are involved in that decision-making and those plans. Because I may be wrong, because like I said, I don't know a lot about this, but I don't think the fishermen have been that involved in, say, the Hilo Bay Trails and some of the other plans for development of Hilo Bayfront. So that's kind of how I would approach it, at least at first. Make sure that the voice is included in the decision-making if there's some understanding there.
Well, the reason I brought that up is because the recent Popeye Colchmeele, our mayor, kind of gave up that fight. That girl's been there hundreds of years and was always allowed access for people to get food. So it is important for us to know if there's people that, it's on the council, that will definitely eat that the way it is, the way it has been and will be. Thank you.
Thanks, Jarek, for adding that. We're gonna even go a little bit further on this topic. I think one of our questions would is, and I think it really relates to getting voices into the council, is how can we ensure the native Hawaiian values are incorporated into the legislative process? I think that's probably one of the barriers to getting more voices in the door as well to get this input. I'm curious if you had any ideas.
Yeah. So, I mean, there are several ways. One is more Kanaka Maoli running for office, obviously, getting into office. More Hawaiians getting on boards and commissions, I think, is really important because although those aren't elected or paid positions, they actually do have an input on what happens in various aspects of what goes on in the county. And the county actually, you know, in several cases, the county does have to listen to those committees and boards. So I think that's a good way to make sure that that's, that people are heard and their voices are brought in. Other ways, I think, yeah, I mean, I think we have to continue with making testifying as easy and as accessible to all people and letting people know about, you know, so making sure that we let people know who maybe haven't had that access in the past or haven't been able to, or even know about testifying, to make sure that people learn about that this is open to you. This is your right. You can testify written or in person. Now we even have, yeah, we're open in person or on Zoom. We're going to keep that going so that people from around the island, different places can be involved. So I think there are a lot of ways to, at different levels, and we need to do them all. I mean, yeah, we can't, we can't just do one. We have to do them all. So.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. So this next question falls on their land use and development. The lease on military bank will expire soon. How do you propose our local government should proceed this time?
I'm sorry, which lease did you say?
Military leases.
Oh, yeah. Oahu'a Loa. Okay. Okay. Yeah. So I think similar to tourism, we have to start weaning ourselves from the military. I mean, it's been a big contributor to our economy and we need to, and, but I don't think it's the right way for our island or our state to really go. But we can't also erase it like just in a flash. We have to, I think, kind of start, just like I said, weaning ourselves slowly. So I think looking at lease by lease, what makes sense? Are there, I think there's like a lease that's coming due that's maybe not actually essential for the activities that are, that the military is doing currently. So I don't really understand why we would need to renew that lease. So I think we do need to look at, like I said, reducing over time the amount of military, you know, space taken up. But it shouldn't be all at once because I think that would leave a big void and cause a lot of- So I think we do need to look at like I said reducing over time the amount of military you know space taken up. But it shouldn't be all at once because I think that would leave a big void and cause a lot of disruption.
You.
Thanks Jen. I'm shifting into economic diversification. What non tourism economic opportunities are you most excited about on Hawaii Island or in your district right now?
Okay, so I so agriculture is obviously a very good one but I know you've probably talked to a lot of you about agriculture because a lot of people are excited about agriculture and to be frank, Hilo is not the center of agriculture, right? The other, there are a lot of districts that are much better suited to dealing with agriculture although Hilo could be a good place for some of the processing, shipping and and packaging kind of thing. So I I think that that's definitely on the table but one idea that I'm most excited about and I you know it's kind of something newish I've been learning about is the idea of our island becoming an expert in certain things that have to do with island living, island building, island engineering, island design, island, those kind of things. Then then market ourselves as the expert to other island communities. Other tropical communities, other communities that have diverse microclimates, things like that. So if we can pick a few things and become real experts on them, say it's you know engineering with local products like you know if it's bamboo or albezia or you know whatever it is but we can be the experts and then we can be the experts that shares that and gets paid for sharing that information with other communities that have similarities to us. I think that that is one area that has potential to grow pretty big. And the nice thing about is you can pick one thing and if it's successful you can choose another thing and and different people can be working on different aspects of that kind of thought. It does need you know things like marketing and I think that's where you know our research and development department could be helpful in in thinking about how can we market help you know new businesses that are thinking about this kind of thing market to other places. So anyway, like I said, this is kind of something I've been learning about more recently. I don't know everything about it but it's it's something that's intrigued me and and I've been pretty excited to to think about the possibilities.
I agree. Sounds exciting.
Next question falls under food security and agriculture. What would you do to help address areas with desert where only have access to fast food or convenience store options?
I guess I don't really think that we necessarily have that here like people only have options for fast food because I guess it depends also on your family situation but I know a lot of people that you know hunt and fish and you know have their gardens and local. So I don't think it's necessary and we since we don't really have any major metropolitan areas on our island, it's not like people don't have any you know access to these things. But that being said obviously wanting to encourage more healthy, sustainable food options for people all over the island. And I think there's a lot of things we can do there, starting from you know my backgrounds in early childhood education, starting from education. I know there's a lot. There were some farm to school bills this session at the state level. If I know that our county is looking into getting involved in supporting childcare so even working with younger children although we don't you know deal with DOE or anything, we could help you know in some if we're supporting early childhood programs and preschool and and childcare programs, we could help start supporting these kind of things where if you are if children are learning about local foods, if they are eating them in their lunch every day, if recipes and and food and you know new foods are getting sent home with families or they come in for a family night and there's a cooking demonstration and they get to cook with their kids and try new foods that are local foods. If we encourage our restaurants to use local foods healthy foods and you know these are all things that the county can do to kind of jumpstart this along working side by side with the state which I think actually has a probably bigger bigger piece of the pie on this one but there are things we can do and and I and I do think we should be encouraging whenever possible, you know more of the the local foods and and incorporating incorporating what we are growing into what we are eating because that's not necessarily always what's happening.
Thank you. Shifting gears a little bit, leading scientists have agreed that by the year 2030, we must have reduced our greenhouse gas emissions by 50%. While we continue to face many other problems and challenges in the community, climate change is different and that there is a proposed deadline in which we need to act, which is 2030. We're wondering if the year 2030 holds any significance for you.
I'm not really sure what you're getting at with the year 2030 but I am excited about the county some of the things the county is has in the works and I would be really excited to support and continue working on having to do with climate change and our carbon footprint as a county. I was actually yesterday I got to go to a meeting because all the council people were busy in their finance committee meeting. So I got to go and with the new mass transit director John Ando and actually a very cool nonprofit organization called CTE which is a engineering and planning firm but it's a nonprofit engineering and planning firm and they deal with helping counties and other municipalities reach zero emissions in their bus systems. So I got to hear all about the new electric buses that the county is working on getting and how you know it's a very complicated system with these electric buses and then these hydrogen buses and the different infrastructure for these different things but it's very exciting I think to think about transitioning, you know taking all those diesel buses off the road and transitioning fully to electric and hydrogen. It's going to take some time. I think they are talking about 2035 so it wasn't 2030 but that's a date that that they're working with and yeah, I think there's actually going to be on the 24th, there's going to be a little demonstration of the electric bus downtown that people can jump on and ride and check out. So I'll try to push that out once I have more information about it but it's pretty exciting I think. We're also you know we've been working on legislation to get the electric vehicle charging stations around the island so that more people can have support if they want to buy electric vehicles instead of gas vehicles and I think that that's really important. That's in the planning committees, both the Windward and Lee Word Planning Committees will be reviewing that bill coming up in the next month and hopefully we'll get that going and and get some of the infrastructure built so that people can do that. Did I answer some of your questions there? I could talk more but I'm not sure like.
I know, great. Thanks.
This next question under water and waste. What important zero waste movement is rendering green wave into a beneficial agriculture such as compost and mulch and making it easy to distribute facility and making it easily accessible and distributing facility around the island. Will you help to move up forward to expedite the process?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so waste management, huge issue on our island as we know it's the infrastructure's old or the systems we have in place now don't work well for us and are certainly not the greenest systems. I have to say knocking doors, recycling is one of the biggest things I hear from people that they're so they're disgusted that we've gone from having a recycling program to not having recycling program. Now I know that there's you know debate over how much the old recycling program we had really did for the environment but I do know it's a concern that people have and they want to be able to do their part on a you know and just a personal level. They want to feel like they're doing something better than they feel like they're doing now. So I also heard that when we were looking at doing waste around the island and how to do it, there was a recommendation to do smaller waste areas and especially around green waste that not doing like one large facility or one large facility on each side of the island but to do smaller ones within the communities that could be used to generate mulch and other things and then go right back out to those communities. I think that's a great idea. I think we need communities to help us there. I don't think DEM you know has the wherewithal to just go out and do that now but I do think we have a lot of the expertise in the community and I think we could do it. I would suggest we do a pilot program like right away. I don't see why we would wait and try one and see how it goes in a community that's willing to kind of help help us with that and and then hopefully we can do that around replicate it around the island. So that's that's what I would hope for.
Thank you. And then one last question I think before our time is up. Sticking on waste and water and talking about those pilot projects. How do you feel about private public partnerships to address waste issues, both solid waste and water?
Yeah. Well, let me start by saying is I am a advocate for labor and unionized labor. So I know there's a big issue around if we do public private partnerships that some of the unions feel like that's taking it out of the hands and out and work from unionized workers. I don't think we I mean I think we really need to be careful of that. I think governments should use unionized labor when they can. So I don't want us to feel like we can just move away from that. That being said, sometimes there's things that we need done that we don't have unionized labor first for and sometimes there are things that as a transitional period, it might be good to do some kind of public private partnership. So I I'm open to it but being very cognizant that unionized labor is you know the backbone of our country and we need good paying jobs. We need to keep you know those good paying jobs on our island. So I'm open to it and I think there is a place for it, albeit not a large place for the partnerships but there are places for it. I mean, we can have like for instance going back to childcare, if our county does something to work with childcare, there are no unionized childcare centers. So we're going to need to work with childcare centers that are not unionized and that's just the way it is. So yeah, so I hope that I answered your questions.
Yeah, you did. Thank you so much. And that's going to be the end for tonight. Mahalo nui. Jen for joining us and sharing many of your ideas. I think I learned a couple of new things and was inspired and also Jerick. Thank you so much for joining this evening. Grateful to have you on. And then a quick, yeah, and thank a quick plug for Hulu too before we log off the stream and thanks everyone on Facebook who's watching but at Hulu Pack, you know, we're funding candidates in the community that are ready to create change with us and so log on to our website to check out more about our platform issues that we're working on and questioned Jennifer on this evening at huli hi, H U L I H I dot com and donations are appreciated and go directly to candidates working on these issues. So mahalo nui. Have a great evening and see you back in next week.